Sitting here daydreaming instead of logging in.
Okay, good afternoon. It is February 10th, it is 2:00, and we are going to begin the workshop. Ms. Patrica, are you on the line?
Yes ma'am, I'm here.
So if we could start, the first thing on the workshop is the agenda review. And Dr. Atkins?
Okay, the agenda review, we started out with a question, Academic Services, which is item E1, approval of the grant for Computer Science Teacher Certification. And so with this one, I'll refer to Rita, Rita? And company.
Company. Afternoon.
Computer Science Grant is because the question that was posed has regards CAPE Funding List. So I wanted to clarify. So the question was, "Approval of the Grant for Computer Science Teacher Cert. There was a discussion at our meetings in Tallahassee that in future CTE scores such as Microsoft could not be used towards school grade. Please explain how it is a grant but it's budgeted." So there's two different questions within that one. And I will address the Microsoft one. The CAPE Funding List, which is produced by FL DOE and Career Source of Florida, has undergone many changes for the upcoming school year. And as you know, the industry certs that are on that list, when students achieve that, there's CAPE dollars that come back to the teacher, the school, and the district. This year's recommended list for 2020-2021, which they release in February, has a lot of industry certs removed. And one of those is the Microsoft Office Bundle, which has been a very top earner for us over the past several years. That's completely off the recommended list for next school year. The Adobe certs that we get, Photoshop, Dreamweaver, Flash, Animate, that the students achieve, now have to be bundled in order for it to count. So this is going to be a major impact on industry certifications. And you are correct, the Microsoft Office Bundle will no longer count towards acceleration points. They are considering breaking the bundle apart and having the single search such as Word, Excel, PowerPoint be digital tool certificates for the middle school level. But I want to clarify, digital tool certificates do not count towards school grade acceleration points. They do bring CAPE dollars back to the school and the district, however.
So, do you have a question? Okay, so, Amy, we're looking at, I guess my question is, since it's been used towards school grade before, with it going away, how is that possibility to affect us?
Well-
With the schools that did so much of it?
Correct. So what my team and I have been doing over the last few weeks, because this is a fairly new announcement, and again, the full recommended, final recommended list is expected to be out this week. But we've looked at the schools offering, in the career academies, which certifications they're offering. Okay, just to give you some numbers on how impactful this might be, based on the Microsoft Office Bundle, in 2018-19, we had 2,071 bundles earned. And Adobe, we had, I'm trying to do mental math right now, like 1,500 earned. So almost 76% of our certifications earned for 2018-19 would be lost. Now, the students still have that value to their resume, but in terms of CAPE funding and acceleration points, that would be lost. So 76% of the certifications earned in 2018-19 would not have counted based on the recommended list for 2021. So what we're doing as a team is looking at, are there certs that we can swap out that are on the recommended list, that are like certs that would have the acceleration points, and also the CAPE funding value to bring dollars back? And we're going through each program systematically and trying to determine if there's a like cert to recommend to the schools. So it's a big hit.
And that's for middle school and high school that are doing it, right?
Correct.
Okay. And the other part of the question was about, it's grant but it's budget.
The Computer Science Grant was a non-competitive, it was an allocation to every county. We got $297,320. 60% of that money must be used to help teachers get their Computer Science K-12 Florida Teaching Certificate. So 60% of the funds are helping, we're sending 35 teachers to a Florida DOE week-long prep class. We will also be using the funds to help pay for the test. And they are allowed to take it twice. We'll be offering remediation courses as well. And then the balance of the grant, 40%, we can use for other training. And we are going to offer code.org training in the summer to middle, a select number. We have a limited amount of funds for middle, high school, and we're working on also offering it to elementary school teachers.
Well, since the certifications are going away, it boils down to my question of why then are we, even though it's grant fund, sending teachers to get certified in an area, I mean besides the fact that it's good for the kids to have on their resume?
This is not a certification like a Microsoft certification. This is a teacher certification, so that they can, because a lot of the funding now is going towards coding.
Right.
And this certification allows them to teach a coding class and opens up more opportunities for the teachers as far as their certifications are. But they won't get like a Microsoft certification. It is nonspecific to a software program.
But you still have the program where teachers that are doing the Microsoft and all that can get certified?
That would not be part of this grant whatsoever.
Right, but I'm saying separately?
Yeah, okay.
Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, so the confusion that occurs, especially when we certify a teacher like a district vocational cert, we say they have to be certified. So they say industry certified, and we say district vocational certified. So what the Computer Science Grant is doing, we're seeing a movement away from the standard Florida Business Ed 6 through 12 certification, like I have that on my teaching certificate. And that shows up in a majority of the CTE programs from DOE. What they're trying to do is transition a lot of those programs to Computer Science K-12. So in order to incentivize teachers to do that, they've done this non-competitive grant to train them and get them tested so they can add the subject area exam to their professional cert. Now, there are several industry certifications on the CAPE Funding List that those teachers could incorporate into their courses and earn money back for themselves, the school, and acceleration points. But they're not required to in order to go through this process. So it's kind of like just professional development for biz ed teachers or folks who have always wanted to go into computer science, now's the time to take advantage.
So I know when I was teaching business and doing the Microsoft things, there was a grant or something paid for us as teachers to go get certified so that we could give the testing to the students.
And that is still available for CAPE, anything on the CAPE Funding List. So, and this is just, and that's for biz ed or any of the certifications they hold. If they're offering that industry cert in their course, we provide resources and access to the vouchers in order to make them ready, because one of the requirements is the teacher holds the industry cert for which their students are going to test.
Okay.
So if it's Photoshop 2015, I better have it before, yeah. But I may have a business ed subject area exam, I may have computer science, I may have math. So that's separate.
Have we lost any teachers because they can't, you mentioned before that there's, you know, if they have to repeat it or whatever. But have we lost any business teachers because of all this sort of?
No, we actually find they're, they come to us highly qualified with the industry certs. And then we've had a really systematic effort of once they come in, or when we hear there's going to be a version change on software, we start offering evening classes to get the teachers' skills. And we have excellent teachers already teaching it in the classrooms, so then it's an extra income opportunity for them to teach their peers. Once in a while, we'll see somebody who comes in with a district vocational cert who may have issues passing one or two, but again, we try to help them with resources to get them where they need to be.
Okay, thank you very much.
Does anybody else have any questions for them? Thank you. Thank you, ladies.
Then I think I'm staying. For Fielder?
Yeah, next one is E2, approval of the Pilot User Agreement, Fielder LLC High School Internship Web-Based Application.
Okay, so this is a very exciting opportunity, and we would like to come back, if it's approved in the meeting, at a future briefing to actually show you the interface. But over the last few years, one of the number one things we've heard from community organizations and the business community is that we need some type of mechanism for students to connect with their opportunities. And so we thought, what if we develop an internship app, kind of like a LinkedIn-type thing where students could connect locally? So we, the question is, why wasn't it developed in-house? We did meet with Trey Davis's teams months ago, and we actually started the process at FMTC. We had a student design the initial screenshots to help us kind of what we were thinking. And then Trey's team was very excited about the project, but they didn't have the resources at the time to kind of move it into their framework of when projects would be delivered. So we looked at another, we looked at an outside vendor, they were only in the post-secondary world. They said, "We haven't even thought of working with high school students." And then we found an FGCU grad who was actually creating exactly what we needed, and this is Connor.
Hi Connor.
Hello, good afternoon. It's an honor to be here, thank you.
So the cost that we presented to you is from the Perkins Fund, so this is part of our Perkins Grant dollars that we've allocated this year. And that's for Connor to take the Fielder Internship App and make it high school-ready. So it's an actual Lee County module that he's developing, and he will, if it's approved, he will move it into production. And it's web-based, so you go into a website, you would create an account as a student, and then we, my team and I, would monitor employer accounts. And then that would create almost like a brokering between jobs and students. So the money is to develop that module, and then it is a subscription as a service model, that S-A-A-S model that we put in there. So that's like Netflix, anything you pay for every month to stay a member of, that's where part of that money goes as well. It allows us to use Connor's services and resources and that kind of stuff. The reason why it ends June 30th is because of the fiscal year, and the grant will not allow us to pay for anything beyond June 30th. So when he develops the original model and we get it going, our intention is to write that monthly subscription fee into the Perkins application for next school year, because it directly aligns our students with workforce opportunities.
So it's a fee that we would pay so that the students can use it like LinkedIn?
That's correct.
Okay.
And we did reach out to LinkedIn, and they did not have anything to offer us. So we tried, we did a lot of research on it, tried to do in-house, looked at a couple brands that are already active. And then we were also very excited that this is a local alumni from one of our universities that's offering this.
And this is going to be offered to, what, juniors and seniors, or what?
All high school students will have access. Yep, if they want to create. And moving forward, like I said, once it's developed, we'd love to come back and brief you and let you actually see the interface. Phase two and three, we know how important soft skills are, and those are incorporated into every CTE program. What we'd like to do is have some type of micro-credentialing, so that if a student has achieved resume writing or verbal communication, it will actually be added to their profile. So if I go in as an employer and I'm looking for micro-credentialed in phone communication or verbal communication, then it's only going to pull up our students who have received that micro-credentialing. That's like a phase two. Right now, we just want to get the ability for students to connect with paid and unpaid internships in our local workforce.
And will they also be taught, you know, how to connect with LinkedIn and all of those other things as well?
Those are happening within our classrooms, within the programs. And also, we have so many great community partnerships that help bring that kind of experiential learning to our students, so that will be ongoing. Right now, Ms. Giddens, a company will contact us and say, "Hey, I've got a land surveyor opportunity, can you post this out to students?" And it'll end up, we'll email our teachers, and maybe a student says, "I don't know what that is, I'm not interested." But now parents will have access to their child's profile as well, and they can say, "Hey, this is a great opportunity, I'd really like for you to apply." So this way, we decrease the bottleneck, and then it's a lot more efficient process for employers to connect with students.
I think it's a great tool.
Thank you.
We're very excited.
And you can track the students, track how many are using it as well, right?
Yes, correct.
That's great. Does anybody else have any questions? Thank you. Thank you so much.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, next question is for Business Services, approval of the Budget Amendment dated December 31st, 2019. And this, this is a question that references, I believe, an object code. Does 300.00 include cost of consultants? The answer to that would be yes. And Dr. Decmoore's is available if-
And basically, I'm just saying, we're then, is 3.00.00 the same one for all consultants? Like when we hire the proximity consultants, where does that, where is that on the budget?
Yeah, that's right. All of our consultant costs come into that major category of the 300, 300.00, as you said. There are many other things within that, because that 300 is a roll-up of everything, of every object code, basically, it starts with the number three, consultants being one of those.
Okay, so there is not one spot we can go to and find, like where we've hired?
Not in that Budget Amendment to the Board, because it rolls up by major object category, as we call it. There is a specific object code within the Budget, 310, in which we track our consultant costs. So we could pull up a detailed report on that if we so chose, but you could not see that within the Budget Amendment to the Board in its current, in its current configuration.
Is that something we can possibly do?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, if that's the direction that we receive. But I think one of the things that we need to do, just like there was a request down here in the next one, and I think that was a request, again, that an individual had made, but it wasn't something that, it was an overall board request. And I would ask that we clarify when we do those type of things, because these things do require additional work that has to be put into preparation of these items when they come forward.
Well, that's why I was asking on-
Sometimes it's substantial, and that's why we, you know-
Right. And I understand that. That's why I was wondering though, on, I know on the Budget Amendment, it may be, not be broken out, but is there on the overall budget, some area that would show that? That's on-
Yes, there is a way to drill down into that information and get that for across the district, which would be numerous places, numerous locations, so yes.
Okay.
Excuse, but is that what you were just speaking on? That that would take quite some time?
If that was a request that came, well, it depends on the nature of the request, but it could, yes. And I just wondered, so some of these things, I want to make sure that if we're to do that work, we make sure we have the board okay to do that, rather than just doing it because it was a suggestion that was made.
So you're not going to do it? Because we have not, as a board, suggested it?
Correct.
Correct, okay.
And if it was suggested, then we'd have to vote on it in this, in a workshop or in a meeting, an action meeting?
Well, I guess, is there a reason why you need, that you would like a breakdown of that?
Well, that was why I asked the question. I was just interested in how much we do spend on consultant fees.
Well, the amount's there, so is there a reason, are you looking for an individual person? Because the amount is definitely on the sheet that we're looking at, but, so what are you looking for, a specific?
I will table this, and perhaps we can sit down and talk about, you know, what it would require, not asking you to do it, but to, just to discuss it, if that's all right.
Workshop it or-
Pardon?
Workshop it or brief it a little bit more in detail, is that what you're saying?
Well, I mean, since it's my question, then if I, you know, at least talk with Ms. Decmoore about it and decide if it's going, if it's going to be in, you know, exorbitant amount of time, then I can withdraw it. But I just have a few questions, and if it's okay, I can speak with her directly.
Sure, that wouldn't be an issue at all.
Okay.
All right, next one is Consent for Human Resources, one item, approval of the Personnel Recommendations. Dr. Pruitt is here to answer any questions. The first one is like one of these examples, I think, and it's not typical for us to put that type of information in the Board Agenda item, and that would literally require a different division doing so. And before we would do that type of thing, that would be an item that would be something that would be a request. Individual requests specific to a specific item, you know, I'm sure that could be, again, a similar response to the last one, you know, you could contact the Budget Department and find out where that, where that, where those dollars come from. So that first one there is not a human resources question. The second one, I would assume, is the differences in Executive Director, Director/Coordinator and Assistant Coordinator. And as I understand, you know, I think Executive Director typically is an individual that usually has multiple departments. Departments are typically run by Directors. Directors oversee a department. Executive Directors usually have more than one department under them, particularly with our larger departments. And then Coordinators do a variety of things in the district, but usually do not have large numbers of staff assigned to them. They're coordinating projects, they're doing specific work. And then Assistant Coordinator would be, you know, a position that would be assisting in the work of a Coordinator, as I understand. I don't know of an Assistant Coordinator position.
Have any Assistant Coordinators?
Not that I'm aware of, Assistant Directors.
Okay, so Executive Directors over multi-departments, Directors over a specific department, Coordinators not connected to any specific department, but just project?
Yes, like for, just, let's say if we got an example, Susan Malay is an Executive Director over multiple departments within, you know, the business services area. Frederick Ross is a Director that would work in one of those departments who directs procurement operations.
And?
We have coordinators, like in Academic Services, that work basically specific areas like environmental education, or a subject matter expert in social studies, math.
Okay.
So I think you're talking about, as you, if you move up through from Coordinator that you're talking about, and a project-oriented person, Director typically has to supervise individuals in a department. Executive Directors typically supervise multiple departments and Chief supervise divisions.
And the coordinators would report to whoever that particular project has to do with, right?
Correct, correct.
Okay. Okay. Ready for number three?
All right, next question has to do with how we're dealing with the fact that continues to increase long-term sub-guest teachers, and we're still taking teachers out of the classroom mid-year just prior to testing.
So in terms of the long-term guest teachers, we do have an increase, but those are recent graduates while we wait on their credentials. That's how we get them into the classroom faster. And I don't remember, I know that Lauren sent it out in one of the Board Updates about how many of the open positions were actually people waiting to get certified. When you look at just long-term guest teachers in general, the numbers are pretty consistent. There's not a, there's not a higher number compared to, you know, similar time the previous year.
And I think this is an important thing that we do, because it is, you know, we're in a competitive environment. Collier County also works very actively to get teachers out of Florida Gulf Coast University and FSW. So, you know, if we're not competitive with what we're offering coming out of those universities, then we may lose an opportunity to pull a really good winner graduate.
And then in terms of, are we still taking teachers out of the classroom mid-year just prior to testing? I mean, not that I'm aware of, that's a, we trust the principals to, you know, manage that and to, you know, they know that it's in the students' and their best interest to have teachers in, you know, in those core tested areas and keep them there. So I'm not sure if there's something more there that you were trying to ask, or?
I think it kind of rolls into the next one, and that's why I had the question, that if someone is currently a teacher and has a full load of teaching, and then mid-year becomes collaborative assistant to the principal, does that mean that they have less classes? That's-
Well, I mean, that position that you're speaking of, that, are you talking about the one that Kristin Stevens is leaving? Yeah, if, I mean, she teaches three classes, so, and they're running an ad for those classes. So are you asking if another teacher were to take that role on?
Okay, I was confused then, because I thought she was going from teacher to peer collaborative.
No, she is a peer collaborative, and she's going to assistant principal.
Okay. Okay.
Ms. Vaughn has her hand up.
While we're talking about the peer collaborative teachers, does every school have X number of peer collaboratives, or it just depends?
No. Yeah, just, just-
What determines that, I guess is a better way to ask that?
Well, if a school is a Title I school and has the funds available, they can elect to hire those positions at their school.
Okay, but in doing so, we're losing three teacher, three teaching units?
Well, they teach 50% of the time.
Right, so they, in, let's say high school, so that would be three teaching units?
Well, it'd be one, yeah, I mean, it'd be one and a half, because they teach 50% I mean, it'd be one and a half, because they, they teach 50% of the time.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. What I would say to you is this, is that, again, you know, we trust principals to make the decisions that are in the best interest of the, the students of that school. I will say to you that a large number of our, especially in the East Zone, but our Title I schools, have a large number of new teachers. And so, ha, having that 50% of the time where they are working in those classrooms and assisting those teachers, really gives a, a really good return on investment, that I, I would, I would submit to you helps a larger number of students because of the work that they do with those new teachers.
And there's, there's research out there as well that supports this model. Before we moved to this, I mean, this was something that the team really took a look at, because, and with career ladders also, it, it, it supports retention overall for a couple of reasons. One, it gives people an opportunity to move up and still stay in the classroom. And, you know, I was just, I'm just reading an article Friday, where it was speaking specifically about the research related to this model and improving retention among teachers because of there was, there were more career opportunities than just stepping outside the classroom into the AP role. The second way is, is the way that she described it. This is a, an opportunity for an expert teacher to literally go into the classroom and support directly other teachers in the classroom and teach them the craft, and also allows that teacher to go in there and observe them in a very similar environment, often with a, a, a student population that's similar in demographics, because it's at the same school.
Okay. Yeah. Well, no, I, I understand that part. That wasn't really my, my question. Okay. So, I just wanted, and, and this, we instituted this after the TIF grant.
I think that's, it started with the TIF grant.
Yeah. We, but then it ran out, and I know we had presentation at that time. So, presently, are the peer collaborative teachers in only Title I schools, or are they at other schools as well?
I'm pretty sure that it's, that it's just Title I schools. I'm not aware of any that-
Okay.
Yeah.
And, yeah, I guess where I'm going with this, and is it still, like, at a $10,000 stipend in addition, or?
If they meet certain criteria. I, I think, again, that was, and so I don't have it memorized, but I know it was put in a board update a couple-
And I, I don't remember, but I just wanted to refresh my memory on all of this, because it's going to kind of segue into what we talk about next, when we start talking about millage and our extreme teacher shortage. I'm not trying to step on anybody's toes that are already peer collaboratives, but I know that we have quite a few people in academic services that are based here, and that go out to the schools. Isn't, isn't that correct?
Yes. And there's-
Correct?
And there's some in, in professional development as well.
And so, what I'm wondering is, and, and that's why I wanted the info now, I understand what Dr. Atkins said about cost-effective and, and the kids. I don't know if I'm convinced that it's the best, you know, and my experience with it is when I was at Estero, and we had the TIF teachers, and I can tell you, actually, that not all of their time was really in classrooms and, and doing this kind of, and doing this kind of thing. And I, I just really wonder how cost-effective, I'll, I'll bring it up later, but especially if we're paying, we're losing three teaching units, plus we're paying, I believe, a stipend on, on top of that. And it almost seems like we're talking about a quasi-administrative position. It's not. It's a talc, it's a talc position.
Yes, ma'am.
But typically, the people that are chosen to be this are, are the ones that are, like, testing coordinators and things like that, that are earmarked for that next step. And, and that's just, I mean, it's not official, but it's just how it is in, in, in the schools. So, honestly, I, I just really have a lot of questions about exactly. I'll have to look at, maybe, Dr. Atkins, you can send us what you read. I, I could Google it, but since you just read something really good about it, and to me, it's something to look at as we move forward.
Well, and again, I'll say that-
With our excellent, highly effective teachers.
Is, and I would say to you that, you know, it's, principals make that choice, again, based on-
I know.
-the needs of their school. And I would submit to you that, given the, the pressures of student achievement, that they're making those decisions, you know, they're, they're not, they're making them with everything in mind.
I, I hear you.
Okay. Is there, anyone else has a question?
Well, I, again, you know, I don't know if this is something that was recent, but I know when Dr. Martin was working directly with the TIF grant, she did look at our own data, which was positive at the time, in terms of how schools that had TIF teachers were doing relative to schools that were not. And we did see improvement between, among the, the different schools.
There's also a direct link to the retention of new teachers, based on the support that they receive from those teachers, and I know that was a, a big piece of it.
Yes.
But, yeah, there was some student achievement. I don't know how current that is.
Yeah, I think it's been a while, but, but, because she was working more directly with that at the time that she was doing that work, so, but anyway.
Yeah. So, actually, as we're moving forward, looking at ways to put our most effective teachers into the classrooms and dealing with lack of qualified, highly qualified and qualified effective teachers, that we maybe take a look at. So, there's data that shows how in our district-
How effective it is.
Things have been improved in, in the classrooms.
Okay. Ms. Morgan?
I just think these questions belong in a separate workshop.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah. And that, and that may well be, but it just came up in my head when you were talking about this and defining it, and also the fact that it might segue into the next set of questions about budgets and, and all of that. And so, I'm just asking if there's data available.
Okay.
I personally would love to see it, as I think about these things.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Dr. Atkins?
Okay. The next question comes then to, or it's Operations Division. So, the first one is I-2, approval to piggyback Hernando County Public School District bid, computers and related products, peripheral devices, equipment, and software. This one will be Dr. Savage responding. The first one, how does this fit with the whiteboards we are currently replacing?
Good afternoon, board members. It's my privilege to answer this question. That is, essentially, this is actually part of a piggyback bid that predominantly funds our intercom system upgrades. And so, the two school projects that constitute 80% of this were the San Carlos Park Elementary and Fort Myers High School. Sometimes with the piggyback bids, it's listing various different items. I can understand how that could be, could cause some confusion, but it, in this case, it is not related to our interactive whiteboard piece, that particular project.
Thank you.
Thank you. My pleasure.
All right. The next one, I believe, is I-6, approval to ranking for the bid, construction management services, HVAC renovation. Dr. Desmore's will respond to the first question. Based on a January 15, 2020 Finance Committee meeting, how have we addressed the vendor process? And we have had two contractors questioning the protocols. So-
Can I just step out of the way, just right back?
Okay. All right.
We'll go on to the next.
Yeah. We'll move on to the next one, then. Next one looks like I-9, approval to ranking. Again, this is building service, official services, HVAC renovation. Dr. Savage.
I've actually got, I'm very privileged to have Mr. Rickenbacher here with me as well, and he can get into a higher level of detail, specific to the terms renovating, replacing. There's actually, it's a little both, from my understanding. Let him explain the specifics of this particular project.
So, the question is?
Why are we renovating instead of replacing the HVAC system at-
Replacement would imply that we're replacing materials in kind. This has been a multi-phase project. This is another phase of Fort Myers High. We already did the central energy plant with the magnetic bearing chillers. We did all the pipe work. This is now moving into the campus in what we call unit ventilators and VAV boxes that distribute the air, and full controls throughout the school.
So, this will essentially be a replacement in the end?
Uh, it's interchangeable, replacement, renovation. It's a renovation of the HVA systems within the campus.
Does anyone else have any questions for him regarding this?
Well, while he's there, it kind of rolls into the, the other question that I had about, that we had received that letter from one of our vendors, and also there was the discussion at one of the finance committee meetings. And it seems that coming-
But if I may, if I may misget, I don't believe that, that's something that he handles. Am I correct on that?
I'm not familiar with-
This is not his, he does not approve-
Desmore's here, though, for that.
Does that answer my portion of the question?
Yes. Thank you.
And thank you, Dr. Atkins, for getting that to me. I really didn't anticipate having that answered today. So, thank you.
Do you want to go back to the other question now?
Yeah.
That she's here?
Yes.
My apologies.
The two contractors questioning the protocols. This had to do with a question that came from the, the January 15, 2020 Finance Committee meeting. Have we addressed the vendor process?
Well, as we stated in the response in the Google Doc, we went to several different advisory committees. So, just to recap, you know, what has happened already in the past, that three years have passed since the new construction process was implemented, and 35 RFQs have been completed with that new process. So, yes, we're currently receiving recommendations for changes in that current RFQ process. And we presented the process to both the Construction Advisory Committee in November, and the Financial Advisory Committee in January, so just a few weeks ago, to receive their feedback. We also revisited the Construction Advisory Committee meeting in January to receive their formal list of the recommended changes. And so, based on that, which just happened in January, we'll review their feedback and recommendation, along from, feedback from other stakeholders, to determine what appropriate changes, if any, should be implemented to the process.
Okay. Is there a time that you're, you know, working towards to do that?
Tentatively scheduled for March.
Okay. Thank you.
Does anyone else, Mr. Jevonelli?
And I just want to piggyback off what she just said, that, so we just had a finance meeting this past Wednesday, and if y'all want to go and watch it a little bit, they really went into detail about what things they'd like to see changed. And there was a, there, the definition of local is, is one of the questioning, they, because I guess presently, our criteria is within 200 miles or so forth, and that. And so, I, right now, procurement is gonna, is working on the questions, and is going to come back to us, or to the finance, excuse me, not finance, Construction Advisory.
Yeah.
And they're gonna, so they're trying to rush it, because they realize that they see all these RFQs that are going by them very fast, you know, so they want to get that narrowed down. So, they're really working hard on it. So, I think it's, right now, just kind of work out a few details and, and so forth, and get some recommendations back to a Construction Advisory, and then the Construction Advisory will, you know, answer that. So, it's, it's a process. So, just wanted to let everybody know that.
So, is it Construction Advisory we should watch, or the finance?
Construction Advisory.
Okay. Thank you.
Last Wednesday.
Yeah. Can, right. Now, we, we also did visit Finance Advisory in January as well. So, the topic was on both, but yes, you were specifically the Construction Advisory Committee meeting in January.
And I just, just want to put in a plug for a couple staff members. Some of us were invited to talk on, talk to the subject on Leap Hits Live today, so, and Dr. Martin was there as well. But Frederick Ross and Brian Williams were, they, they did a great job.
Sorry. Just ad libbing for you.
They did a great job. Milwaukee was there as well, President Milwaukee. So, it was, first, it was the three of us, Dr. Martin, President Milwaukee, and myself, and then Frederick Ross, and the true experts came in, you know, and, and Mr. Williams. And those of you, I think, are, most of you are aware that Mr. Williams, when he worked for Miami Dade, worked specifically in this area, developed a plan that later turned into the Economic Development Office for the Miami Dade School District, and then he, he ran that office for three and a half years af, and that was after he had been an attorney. So, we've got some experience with trying to get local business, it was very successful in Miami, a local business and, and minority and small business owners more involved in the procurement process, and being able to be better represented in terms of the, the contracts that are awarded. And so, they, now we've got Mr. Ross and Mr. Williams and, and our teams collaborating together. So, I, I think, I'm looking forward to great things in the future, but it's nice to have, you know, some people who really, truly, in their heart, believe in this type of work, and are, that work directly on this type of a project, and who have experience doing it.
And that, I think that dovetails nicely into the discussion we had at ISOC, where we talked about contacting FGCU for a study on the economic impact of the half penny sales tax, to include an increase in minority and small businesses getting contracts as a result of that revenue coming in, so.
Absolutely. Right. Mr. Jevonelli?
And that was one of the recommendations the finance had, was the minority vendor. So, yeah. It's all, wheels are in motion.
It's all, it's all coming together.
Yep.
Very good. Okay. Well, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? Thank you.
Okay. I believe that was it for questions, so that-
Okay. So, if we have no more questions regarding the agenda review, we'll go ahead and go to the operating budget, which will be Dr. Pruitt, Dr. Desmore, and Dr. Spiro. And thank you.
Absolutely.
All right. Good afternoon, Dr. Atkins, members of the board. Thank you so much. I am here with my esteemed friends and colleagues, Dr. Pruitt, Dr. Spiro, so that we can talk with you today about some operating budget information, take you through some general information, and then allow time for some discussions and questions, as you may have them. So, this is just a general overview of some of the things that we'll be talking about today. But our current operating budget in this discussion is timely in terms of talking about our current operating budget, because of course, we're going into our new budget cycle for FY '21. So, just some general information and facts related to our current operating budget, which is currently at about 923.9 million, is comprised mostly of funds that we receive through the FEFP, or the Florida Education Finance Program. In this current year, fiscal year '20, those funds are estimated to be 731.5 million. So, the vast majority of those funds that we, that we have in the general fund are received through the FEFP. And this breaks down this year to about $7,807 FEFP funding per FTE. In examining what that's really means, it's necessary to look at our numbers historically. So, we included some information for you here. If you look at what we have in the top left, we've got in FY '20, that number of $7,807 per FTE in funding, which was a three and a half percent increase in FEFP funding- per FTE in funding, which was a 3.5% increase in FEFP funding over the previous year. And so we track some years here, you see what has happened over the last six years, but we take you all the way back to 2008 when FEFP funding per FTE was $7,483 per student. So when you look at that increase between the 7483 in 2008 to what we have now in 2020, which is 7,807, that's a 4.33% increase in per student funding since 2008, per student funding. So we know that we've had quite a large growth within our district over that period of time, but when you break that down to a per student increase, 4.33%. The increase in inflation in that same time period from 2008 to 2019, and this is just looking at the CPI index, 18.74%. So when you see that information, it's kind of just one factor, one piece of information that really does kind of highlight the type of pressure that could be on a school district's operating fund when you are struggling to keep up with inflation. And those are the, the increase that you see in per student funding over that same period of time. Mrs. Morgan, did you have a question?
I do. What was the increase in property value from 2008 to 2019?
So...
Don't have to answer that, but I think it would, it'd be interesting to know that.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and we can certainly, before we end it, I can give you that information while we're, when I flip the conversation over. Because we went down and then we went up. So I know that we've increased about 50% since we started coming back up, but I can get that.
Okay. And then the other question is, just, when did the, when did they start, when did they start using the rollback rate? And when did they start using the rollback rate plus an additional rollback?
So the rollback rate has been in, has been in play year, it predates me, I'm pretty sure.
No, no, no.
But we have, but I think what we do, what we do have is some information for you that we can provide that shows over a number of given years, what the rollback rate was in that particular year in relation to the current millage rate, so we can see how much of a percent of a rollback rate we had in each, in each individual year, which is what I, is that where you're going, what you're asking?
Yeah, because I'm trying to understand, essentially, the state has changed the basis that it uses for funding public education in terms of, of property. It used to use the increase in property value to increase the public education. But it was about 2010, they started using the rollback rate. I mean, they've always told you what the rollback rate was, but they've started using the rollback rate.
Got you.
And then the last couple of years, in addition to the rollback rate, they have cut taxes even further. Am I correct?
No, that's, yes, that's, yes.
It's nice to know where in here some of this stuff happened, at least for me. I don't know about the rest of the board, but...
Got it. So that, so that one, we do, we've already got kind of formulated a handy dandy little sheet that shows our rollback rate versus the previous year millage and what the percentage was of rollback rate in that particular year. So you can see the increase of that rollback rate over that period of time, which has an effect, of course, on your school district's budget because we're not able to take advantage of the increases in property value as possibly would another taxing authority.
Right, thank you.
Yep, absolutely. We can get you that information right after this workshop, and I apologize for not bringing it today.
I just, going forward, it would be nice to have the...
Yep, absolutely. Okay, and then in terms of our expenditures per FTE, which you see on the right, we also endeavor to make relevant comparisons to our peers to ensure that our expenditures do line up reasonably. And so you see here just an offering of what those expenditures per FTE, and this is an average in the general fund, in 2019. We have, we rely on the state to get us that information for all of our different districts, and there is a lag in that information. So the last we have as far as expenditures per FTE is in 2019, and you see that we compare pretty much on par with the state average. And then you see other districts around us and above and below, but okay, we're right there on the average. So we do endeavor to make sure that we're doing those relevant comparisons to make sure that we have our appropriate benchmarks and we know what our outliers are. So just so you see, this is just a functional, or I'm sorry, like an expend, an object expenditure illustration of what our operating budget looks like. So this is percentage-wise how our operating budget is comprised, 70% of salaries and benefits, and then kind of 30% everything else, as is laid out in this depiction. And then you see kind of a numbers breakdown in the, in the slide after that. We do also attempt to benchmark our allocations, or that is our budget with others. We, the numbers that we were looking at here are expenditures per FTE, and those are historical from last year. We also attempt to make sure that we're benchmarking our budget to make sure that our breakdowns do benchmark well with others in surrounding districts and that we know what our outliers are. So just a little bit of information related to the operating budget, how it breaks down now, where the major funds within the operating budgets come from, and how it is that we've had some pressure on the operating budget over the last several years based on the increases that we've received and how that compares to inflation. And so that's just one piece of information that is pretty important, I think, but I think it's pretty effective in terms of outlining how it is that an operating budget can come to have a lot of pressure on it based on circumstances. And especially when you look at this breakout here and determine that your salaries and benefits are 70% of the budget, when your budget is very labor-intensive, swings in salaries and swings in benefits have a huge impact on the budget itself. So I want to turn it over to Dr. Pruitt so that she could talk with us about some historical information about salary increases over the past several years within our district, comparisons to our other states, and kind of progress that we've made over the past several years.
Excuse me, Ms. Witten's had a question regarding what you just spoke about.
On the salaries and benefits, such a large piece, is there, again, where, where can I go to see that breakdown?
So that, that breakdown is on, is in our budget book. So inside of the budget book, and let me tell you exactly what page that is.
Thank you, I was hoping you would do that.
I, I will. As soon as I can find it. So that is, if you look at the budget book, beginning on page 72, that, 73 that is, that begins to outline the general fund itself. So you can see the functional and the object breakdown of everything within the general fund. And the particular graph that we're looking at here actually lies on page 77. So between those pages in the budget book, you can see a lot of different detail related to the breakdowns in the general fund.
Thank you.
All right. So we have worked really hard over the last several years to get teacher pay at our goal at the 75th percentile. One of the, one of the challenges to that task is that it's a moving target. For example, we, around this time of year, the state begins to update what the beginning salaries are and average salaries are at other districts around the state. So we take that information, it's typically around this time of year, to determine what is the new benchmark. It's going to be particularly challenging this year because a lot of counties have instituted some type of sales tax or millage, you know, specifically Collier and Charlotte Counties have done so, which has allowed them to really increase their, their, you know, teacher pay. So we're going to have to recalculate to determine what is it going to take for us to get to this, what the new 75th percentile is. But when we finished the bargaining from last year, which gave that two, you know, that we negotiated the, the pay increase for two years, that got us, based on the data at that time, almost to the 70th percentile. So, you know, we are very proud of that. I would, would submit to you, it's probably not there anymore based on, you know, the changes that have occurred around the state. So we will begin to update you on those more recent numbers once, once we have them. And that's part of, to your question, Ms. Morgan, about how certain things were going to cost us to get there, we don't really know yet because we have to, we've got to see what those, what those new benchmarks are. But definitely, we have some, oh, is it, did you want to go to the, the general areas?
Um, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't...
No, not yet.
You're looking for compensation options?
Yeah.
That would be the, skip the, skip the...
We can go backwards. There we go. And then we can go back to the other. Okay. So these are the general areas that we're looking at relative to the area of compensation. We, as we've discussed before, we do have a turnaround committee which consists of administrators and teachers from turnaround schools, and they continue to look at options. So their most recent task is going to, they have what I'll call their, what they would see as a good plan moving forward, and the cost of that is about $3 million. But what we're asking them to do is go back and say, if we had all kinds of money, you know, what would that plan look like? And what, you know, and where would that get us? And again, we won't know exactly what that's going to take until we get that new 75th percentile. We talk a lot about benefits, and this is one option in terms of, there's a lot of, especially at this time of year, we're in open enrollment, that people think that our insurance is too expensive, and it's, that's not the issue. The issue is the amount of money that we put towards the cost of health insurance. Our plans are actually richer and cost less than the city and the county and everyone else, but they put more money towards the contribute, you know, the employees' portion of the insurance, and so therefore it costs less for the employees. So that's another potential area. Looking at supplements and increasing the compensation for supplements, we currently index them. So that would be an area, definitely, if we were moving up what the starting pay is, that would have a direct impact on what those supplements are. Career ladder, there's a career ladder committee that consists, again, of administrators and district staff and teachers. And again, they've got some really great ideas relative to four and five additional, fourth and fifth additional levels of the career ladder. And also, they have got some really great ideas about ways that teachers that are on the grandfather schedule can also be part of the career ladder sort of plan, if you will. So also with that committee, we're asking them, okay, we have these plans, but now again, if money were no object, you know, what would that look like and what would we need to do? Again, the benchmark being, what would we need to do to be really competitive across the state? So we've got to figure out what that benchmark is. And then just overall, that increase in base pay of employees, again, depending upon what that will take us to get to that 75th percentile. So those are the general areas. Like I said, we can put some actual dollars to that once we know what our target is. We just don't have that information as of yet.
Mr. Jevanelli?
So, we talked about this before, and I don't know how, I don't know if it would follow maybe under the turnaround schools or something, but the travel, a travel pay or compensation for people, I mean, because we have a lot of teachers, I believe, that drive quite a long ways, and, you know, honestly, time is money. And I think that for someone to go to, from Cape Coral to Lehigh is a, quite of a, you know, a long drive for someone in the morning. And I don't know, I think that, and we, and our schools out there are really important, and we, I feel like sometimes we're, they're, we're not looking at them equitably.
Well, yeah, and I, and I mean, I would say that's definitely an issue, and there are folks that they will do that drive because they do get a turnaround supplement, but if that supplement were to go away, then we run the risk of losing them. And so I definitely am not opposed to the idea of looking at some type of mileage component. I, I mean, I think that's a great idea. I mean, I, yeah.
Okay. That would be, that would be something I would like if we could talk, you know, talk about.
It'd be one, I don't know if it still is, but it used to be one of the dimensions when they had, came up with what factors determine how hard to staff school.
It is, it's part of it. Where do the teachers live relative to the school? But it, but to your point, as we, you know, have teacher shortages, as Ms. Vaughn was pointing out earlier, you know, maybe that was something we might want available regardless of what school it is, you know, whether it's not, you know...
Exactly equitable, I agree as well.
Right, exactly. Yep, thank you.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah, I was going to ask about benefits. I would think that most teachers that are in education for a career would prefer a higher base pay because you might have more money in your pocket for the short term, but it, you know, we're looking ahead and looking ahead to FRS. And, and is there any benefit to the district to give more to the health insurance versus the base pay?
No, it's just that compensation is one pot of money. And compensation includes what's put towards paying for benefits. And so to your point, that is why, this is kind of where we are, because you're right, teachers and support staff have wanted that money, that, you know, but it's one pot of money. So what, wherever that money goes, that's where it is. And so consequently, because, you know, this, everything to do with compensation is part of the bargaining process.
Right.
So yes, you're, you are correct.
And, and, okay, because I didn't think that there was any benefit to the district that we would come out ahead financially giving one or, or the other, but, you know...
Well, other, other than...
The audience, I'm wondering if the teachers, support and support staff are thinking ahead.
Well, it's funny, this last go-around, the support staff actually definitely had an interest in the money going towards their benefits because they have seen what's happened. The problem is that what we've seen in the last several, so you saw, Dr. Desamore showed you how, what's happened to funding, right? 4% since in the last 11 years. But I need you to think about, in the last five years, health costs have, at an average of 7% to 8% per year, have gone up. And so we just haven't been able to keep up because of, there's such a disparity between the amount of money we've had to put towards total compensation. So, yeah.
Yeah, and it's, it's really difficult because we have some people that are able, that are single people, or perhaps they have a spouse in, in a different, in a different job.
Yeah.
And all they have to do is insure themselves. But then again, for those, I mean, it really is a catch 22, because those that have families, especially the support staff, I understand some people just work to have insurance, which is really a sad, sad tale on the state of our health insurance, not meaning us as we, in general.
In general.
Health, health insurance. But on the other hand, there's that, that trade-off on, you know, looking ahead to see...
Right.
You know, if I had more money in my pocket, would I feel better about all of this?
Right. Because a 3% raise doesn't keep up with an 8% increase in health insurance. It just doesn't.
Dr. Pruitt's team today had a financial wellness event in the atrium, so they had a number of people that were, that were invited to come in, and staff could, could partake in that. Just to get to kind of the point, I think a lot of young teachers in particular maybe not really focus on the long-term. And so that's one of the things that I know that, that they're trying to do in insurance and benefits and human resources, so they brought that event today.
Yep, thank you.
Ms. Gittens?
I was talking the other day to one of the Spock Union Leaders, and what they were saying is the difficulty is saying, do you want the money in your benefits, or do you want the money in your paycheck? And I, and I, I look at that and look at the compensation options and wonder, is, is there any possibility of, whereas I may want it in benefits and she wants it in, you know, in salary? in salary? Is, is it too difficult to give the option to us to decide?
Well, you can through the benefits that you select. You know, for example, if you want to bring a child on or a dependent, or you want to, you want to go with, put your money in a long-term disability, a short-term disability, or if you want to pay for the higher option dental plan. And that's, I think, what a lot of employees want, is they say, you know, if you give me those dollars, at least then I have the flexibility to put, if I want to invest more in insurance, or I want to invest a larger amount in a life insurance policy, I have the, I can make that decision rather than district making that decision for me.
Or, or the union. I mean, because I, it was my understanding, the union would, you know, gather the information and make a determination which way we're going to go this particular year. And so, I mean, I understand what you're saying about, you know, I would have the option to decide if I want to hire, you know, go into the higher insurance premium or whatever. But isn't, isn't it the decision then of the bargaining where more dollars are going to go? Are you going to do the three percent?
Yes, it's jointly bargained.
And salaries, or are you going to do?
They're, they're the recognized, you know, negotiating agent for the school district. And then, you know, so the board and the, the union negotiate those contracts. And then, of course, I would, it's a collaborative process. So, you've got membership from, from, you know, teachers, support staff, and then also district staff that serve on the insurance task force to help make some of those recommendations.
But, I mean, would it be possible to say, okay, here's three percent, where do you want us to, you know, and you opt to do it this way, or you opt to do it that way? Or is the union final say-so where that three percent's going to go?
Well, I would, I wouldn't want to say that it's, it's not the union, it's a joint, it's a joint negotiated agreement. So, if the, if the negotiated team wanted to come up with a solution like that, then that would be the decision that they would bring forward. So, you know, anything is negotiable, I guess. Wages, terms and conditions of employment.
Yeah. And I, I think really the only, the issue that would, you know, one of the interests that always comes up every year from both sides is manageability. And so, I think that would be the key point to that, is, is it manageable within the system that we have?
And that's what I'm asking.
Right. And I don't know that. We certainly, yeah, but.
So, if someone would bring that up in negotiations, then is it something we could, could?
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
Ms. Givinelli?
So, I, and I want to make sure I'm understanding what Ms. Kittens is trying to say. Are you, are you saying you want to give the, and the employee the option to take the insurance and pay, the?
Let's say we're going to give a three percent raise.
Or not insurance, and not insurance at all.
Right.
If their, their spouse may have the insurance, they would have that option to take that additional funds and put it in their pocket.
I, I think she's, I think what she's saying is, is if we know that a raise is going to be equal to $500, you can decide, is my $500 going in my paycheck, or is my $500 going to go towards my insurance? To let each individual make that choice, rather than, as a group collectively, we say, everybody's going to get $500 towards their pay.
Exactly.
Right? Am I?
Exactly. Perfect.
Okay. So, and so, that leads me to one question. So, what is like the value of, of the insurance? Like if some, so what I was thinking is, if they had that option, but that, I think you and I spoke about this, and you said, well, it's part of bargaining, so therefore, but, I mean, if someone doesn't want the insurance, it seems like that is part of their compensation package. So, you know, could that be something? But that, I know that goes back to bargaining.
Right, it does. And, and then it comes out of that whole pot of money. So, I'm back to that again, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, so it's.
And we do have people that, that do have insurance that they've gotten from retired, like military retirement or something like that.
Right, that they don't.
So, they get a, a small amount of money from the district. They don't get the full value of that. And then, again, that is something that was negotiated a while ago. I can't remember the amount of, is off the top of my head.
I'm curious.
They get their compensation. If the compensation package is, you know, let's say $5,000, and they're only going to use three of it, what happens to the two?
Then that gets divided so that we can give higher salaries.
Again, it's all just one pot of money.
So, you're back equally, like you just said, instead of that one person getting the value in their paycheck?
Right.
Okay.
And, and I would submit to you that, at least based on the bargaining sessions and the experience that I've had, that, you know, the group collectively likes that it gives more money to the overall pot of money, you know, rather than, because then somebody else is going to get a several thousand dollar potentially raise.
Right.
Versus somebody else.
But it's their option if they want it or not, that's.
No, not the way it's bargained. It's not, right.
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, yes.
Exactly.
Right, but that's a question.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The only other thing that I really want to, that is really, really important to this conversation, and that we really try to stress to our talc and spout, well, everybody actually, and every employee, is that if you look at the amount of increases that we've received from the state over the last several years, the amount of compensation increase has always been more than that. So, when we've gotten an increase of one percent, compensation was three percent. When we've got, so historically, over the last, you know, however long, we have always given more than the state has given us in an increase. And so, you can just do the math on that. It's not sustainable.
While we made a number of the reductions and the changes in the ratios last year to be able to continue to keep pace, and as a result, Dr. Pruitt was able, and her team, was, was able to deliver that two-year package that, that put approximately three percent each year into the salary schedule for a total of six percent. Would not have been able to do that with the funding that was available. This current year, I think we've heard from Dr. Desmore's and also we've seen from Carol Green, that currently it's looking like 2.7% in terms of an increase overall. And so, you know, if we're looking at a three percent, you know, or whatever the, the compensation increase would be at bargaining this year, three percent would be greater than the funding increase that would be coming from the state, which means that you're going to have to look at, at other reductions to be able to make that happen.
So, based on the conversation we've had.
And I didn't know, you know, again, that one slide seems like it might be a little bit out of, out of order. I could be wrong, but I don't know if you wanted to talk about, you, you talked about the human resources options, and you, then we have the academic services options, and then talking about the actual mileage and so forth. So, before we hit.
We, we sure can.
Yep.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. So, let's talk a little bit about the academic services options, if there was an increase in the revenue. And our team really came up with three areas that we feel like are the greatest opportunities for our students. First off, we would love to extend the teacher and the student day by 30 minutes. And as I'm sure most of you know, for example, our middle schools and our high schools, both of them, when we compare ourselves to the top Big Ten districts, we are at the bottom with the amount of time that we stand in front of children. So, we have the least amount of time with our students in both of those particular secondary areas. And so, we would love to expand the amount of time that our teachers are with our students by 30 minutes.
So, not, not to confuse things, because I do want to make sure we, because I, I know there was a board member question, and Dr., or Lauren had, had sent out, I think, a response to that question. There is the student instructional day, and there is a group currently that is looking at that. Principals have been working on it, I think even last week, and will be bringing a recommendation forward once that work is finalized. But again, that's the amount of contact time for students.
Correct.
This, which potentially could be expanded at certain levels, but I don't believe that's something that could be expanded at all levels, given the current schedule. The second thing is what he's referring to here, which is an actual increase in the teacher's scheduled workday, which would, of course, again, be a negotiated piece. This has to, this is something that has to be negotiated, and would also have a financial impact, because I'm sure compensation would be, you know, a portion of that. So, I just wanted to make sure I clarified between the two of those.
The average, we figured the, out that the average increase for teachers, if we were to do that, is about $2,500.
And can I, I'm sorry. Ms. Vaughn?
Okay. If, extend teacher and student days, wouldn't that be just something that's not viable for our present busing, for transportation?
They're involved in these discussions.
Right, but what's their take on it? I can't imagine, you know, when, I, I asked a question about it because I'd heard about it, and I said, I certainly hope nobody is thinking about starting the high school day any earlier than the 7:05 when the bell rings right now, especially, not, you know, all things considered, but especially with the data about teenagers starting at that hour, the worst possible thing. But then, on the other hand, if you bump everything up, you'd have middle schoolers getting home at, like, dinnertime, six o'clock, I mean, it, it just doesn't seem like it's even viable with our present transportation situation. And certainly, we're at least a couple years away from drawing in with our proximity schools.
Right.
So, that, that's what, that's what I'm saying. This doesn't, to me, it just doesn't seem viable, extend teacher and student days. But perhaps Dr. Spiro has a.
Vaughn?
No, no, perhaps you have an answer on why it's here as one of the options.
So, for us, we were looking at if we had the opportunity to have an increase in revenue, and if we had the best-case scenario, what were some options that would really enhance our students inside of our schoolhouses? And the amount of time that we're spending right now in front of students is the least compared to all of our top 10 districts. So, we have to start looking, being creative, on how we can increase the amount of time that our teachers are with students. Whether or not we do across the board, K through 12, everybody, or whether or not we have a phase-in process. And I know that Mr. Savage and I have had an offline conversation. His team is already looking at some options as we continue to have this conversation moving forward. But yes, I do think it would be a challenge, but I do think there is definitely a, a great need, especially, you know, it was, it was shocking when we, when we really did look at our top 10 districts, and you see middle schools the bottom, high schools at the bottom, with the amount of contact time we're with students. And so, and we.
Oh, yeah, and I, no, I totally agree that we need, I, I looked at Collier, and I was remembering, you know, my block schedule in Texas, we were, we had 90-minute blocks with, with our kids. And when you teach a 90-minute block versus 84, it doesn't seem like much, but it is. Especially cumulatively, it's a lot, a lot of times. So, that's, but it, it just seems, at least for the next few years, I, I just don't know how that would.
But I think we, it's important for us to at least.
Think about it.
And think about it, yes. And, and one of the things that, that, I, I'm, I'm very happy that we are looking as hard as we are currently at proximity. We had our kickoff this morning, and that those folks will be coming before the board in the very near future. Because one of the things, as we continue to look at, at our population patterns in Lee County, and the infrastructure that supports the population, it's going to become increasingly difficult to continue at the rate of busing that we're currently doing, because I, I really don't believe our infrastructure's going to keep up with our growth. And therefore, we're going to have to make sure that we're getting students to school closer to where they, they live than we are currently doing. The good news is, is I think that we'll be working toward a goal in elementary relatively soon. You know, in a couple of years, we should see some form of implementation. So, that's positive. But I think because of what Dr. Spiro said, relative to the academic achievement of students, and, and what we're seeing particularly at, at the high school level, I mean, this is important for us to take a look at and make a recommendation, with transportation obviously being a major consideration.
The other options we were looking at were two more. One was to expand our after-school opportunities for our students. Enrichment, music, world languages, STEM, culinary, there's so many options that we can expand to all students if we had, definitely had an increase in revenue opportunities, as well as deepening our tutoring. So, definitely with a focus on students who were deficient in particular standards, or we're looking at students that may need extra time. This would provide some of those opportunities for those students. And then, finally, we would like to have fifth quarter for all students, not just those in elementary. So, fifth quarter, we could add 28 days onto the school year by targeting our Level One, Level Two, our Good Cause students, and really do away with our summer school program and have fifth quarter be the extended learning time for our students, so that they have the extra time that they need to gain that academic experiences that they need, as well as then prepare them moving forward to their next grade, grade level as well. So, you lose that summer slide, as they like to say, and that academic time continues to move forward. And though, so if we had an increase in revenue, those definitely would be the three areas that academic services would like to focus in on.
So, just probably jumping back up, then, if you would go to the voted operating millage slide, and then we could get into the more specifics. I know Dr. Desmore's would talk about, because this question did come up, well, what could be, what could be raised regarding the amount of revenue? And there's options here. And then, how could that be used? The team just gave you some examples, so.
But I think we had a question. Did we want to pause to take that? Could you have one question? I know that Ms. Vaughn had one more question.
Yeah, speaking of summer slide, here's an unpopular idea. Have we looked at year-round schooling?
Right, yeah.
Would that be a cost-saving?
So, it's funny you mention that, because at the turnaround committee that Dr. Pruitt was talking about, that is one of the conversations at that particular committee is looking at starting some year-round schools. And so, that came from some teachers and administrators working collaboratively with our turnaround schools who brought that idea forward. So, conversations about that have begun, so yes.
Yeah, and I, I haven't looked at data on that in a long time, but is that potentially cost-saving? And I would think that it would be a way for some personnel actually to make more money, because instead of, they, they could opt to teach the extra, the extra time that they would normally be off.
So, our group has just begun to look at the research of the year-round schools, and we have not gone into the financials at this point. But I did think it was interesting that they came from the teacher group where that request came forward.
Ms. Kittens. On the part about expanding the after-school and tutoring enrichment, I know I had met with the representatives of the YMCA and the superintendent about moving forward on a plan. And in fact, I spoke to one of the gentlemen today, and they're very excited about moving forward with the summer program and expanding it, and also the future of doing the before and after-school. Can you address where we're at with that?
I'm going to let Ms. Stillwell come up, and she's leading that endeavor for us, but we did have a meeting with the YMCA today. We do have some sites that have been selected. I'm going to let her talk a little bit about some of the details.
Everybody? Yes, we've been working with them for the past few months. We've identified four schools that they can put some extended opportunities in over the summer for an enrichment camp. We're looking at them being able to come in from about 6:30 in the morning until 6:00 at night, which is when they normally run their summer programs, Monday through Friday. So, we're working internally a little bit about how that would work, considering we close on those, we do the four extended day during the summer, and then we're closed on the Friday. So, we're working around that to work with them. And they serve anywhere from around 80 to 120 kids per camp, but we might be able to actually help them increase that, because some of the discussions that we've actually had is placing their enrichment camps at sites that are near the schools where we're offering our summer school programs, and potentially being able to call in transportation to help us, so that if a parent decides that they need their child to have a full day experience, that potentially the bus could pick them up and take them to our summer school camp in the morning, and then take them over to the YMCA enrichment camp in the afternoon. And then, they would be able to have a full day rather than a half-day. Also, talking about the potential of having siblings be able to do that, too. So, say if a kindergartner or a first grader is in one of our programs at an elementary school, that a fourth or a fifth grader could go to the bus stop with the younger sibling. We could take the younger sibling to the enrichment camp, and then we could take the older sibling to the YMCA camp, and then they could. older sibling to the YMCA camp, and then they could meet up in the afternoon. So those are all the discussions that are on the table, and we're waiting for them to provide us some contracts that they have with other counties so that we can draw up an agreement. And then once we had that, we actually talked about coming back and briefing the board together so that we could have a little bit more discussion about what that would all look like. But we are moving forward. We're very excited. We're very committed, and hopefully we'll be able to have something prepared here no later than the beginning of March, because we really want to be able to get that out to parents, since now's the time everybody's looking for what their kids are going to do over the summer.
And I think it had to do, too, with their ability, timing to get it done in order to...
Yes, they provided us the timeline, and that's the timeline we're working under. Yep.
Very exciting.
Yeah.
Just a real quick question.
Yes.
Are they going to be in the schools?
Correct.
They are, okay.
Yes, their programs...
I know currently, their programs are always in the churches.
Yes, so they're looking at moving those programs from the churches into our schools. And then hopefully, the idea at some of these locations will be that we'll be able to do the summer program, and then move forward to do, have them help us do some extended day programs then for some of these schools next year, to provide kids that it's extended day enrichment opportunity.
Could you share just the, real quick, the four schools that you've...
So the ones that we've identified currently are Tice Elementary, Harnsmarsh Middle, Cypress Lake Middle, and Cape Elementary.
And I do know that in the East Zone, they have had a summer camp at a church, and they were only able to service 60 students, and they're hoping to at least double that this year.
And that's what we're hoping to.
Ms. Giavanelle?
Sorry, so you said Cypress Lake Middle?
Correct.
How would that work if they're rehabbing that school? I mean, so how would that...
Well, if we, I'm not sure that the deadline is going to work, that even if we get that information back, we're going to be able to start that early. But we've called in operations, and Amy, all the chiefs have been part of all of these discussions, and so we settled and identified on those schools. And so we will be making sure that wherever the kids are located, if there are projects that are going on at that school, that we make sure we can still continue doing those projects while the kids are still, while the kids are there. Yeah, that was a big thing for us, was to make sure we could still do all the deep cleaning at the schools, that teachers would still have access that preschool week back. Normally, they run about a 10-week program, I think. This time around, we're probably just going to do the nine weeks so that we make sure that we have our schools back for preschool week. So all of that is in discussion to make sure that we still get those summer projects completed. And if we have to, we can move. But they were excited about Cypress Lake, because it's right across the street from Rottenberg Park, and it's right near the pool. So that was one that they were very excited about being able to offer for their kids.
And, yes, I believe they use that school for the pools. Can you, so you're going to come back to us at a later time with all that?
Yep.
And then we'll have more questions for you at that time.
Yeah, yeah, and hopefully the YMCA will be part of it, too. So we're just working out some details, and then we'll be able to bring that back.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks, Lauren. Operating Millage?
Thank you. All right. So then, looking at the opportunities for additional revenue, the relevant statutes related to an operating millage for a school district would be the 101.1.71 in some Section 9, and you have that information in your backup. Section 9 talks about being able, school districts being able to offer an additional millage specifically for school operating purposes. And then in the, which is not, which is a not-to-exceed-10 mill limit. And then 101.1.73 talks about the timeline of that millage, and each of these, which is a very important point to think about as, you know, the plan would be constructed as to potentially how money could be used, it's good for not to exceed four years. So those are the, kind of the two statutes, major statutes, which talk about the ability to and the rules surrounding those. So the possible revenue generated, as you see here. Now, within that statute 101.1.71, as we discussed, it talks about a 10-mill limit. Right now, we are levying our total millage right now 6.147. So by the rule, it could be something up to 10. But practically, as you see within the information that you have, we had another form that kind of showed all of the school districts as of the 2018 year, because again, this information from the state kind of lags a little bit. But as of the 2018 year, on that list, you saw there were 12 districts that currently, at that point, levied an additional operating millage. Since then, that we could find, we found three more that levied since then. So I think we have a total of at least 15 at this point that have an additional operating millage. So based on our current tax role, current tax role now, which is our $90.8 billion of our tax role, we have a sampling of what type of revenue we would be talking about based on the amount of millage that we would be generating, anywhere from, or that we would be levying, I'm sorry, anywhere from a quarter to a dollar, would be anywhere from $21.8 million to $87.2 million, the proceeds of which would be good for not to exceed four years, and the proceeds of which could be used for the possibilities that we've, you know, we've just previously discussed within human capital and within our academic areas. So I'll go through, I just wanted to highlight within the information that you have, we had just an overall timeline of what happened when we went through our last referendum, kind of when that timeline started, and the amount of communication that went into that effort and over what period of time. So as you can see, really in December of 2014 is when that effort really began full force. Excuse me, and I could even take you probably further back than that, because conversations have been had with the board for probably a good year and a half before then, laying the groundwork to lead up to that Finance Advisory Committee motion that took place in December of 2014. And then going through the next several years, as you see outlined here, where it was a heavy concentration on communication, on contacting people in the community, and understanding strategy, working with a political action committee, that type of thing. And then you have here, for the Sales Tax Initiative, just an idea of some of the things that went into that effort in terms of making sure that we communicated appropriately with the public, that the groundwork was laid appropriately so that support could be built for the effort, and the timeline in which it took to do that, which was not short. I think that in some instances now, kind of after the fact, I think on, you know, at least for, on the part of some, or the perception of some in the public is that it was a short endeavor, and it was not. It was, it was years in the making. So just some background information for you to kind of take as we have the ensuing conversation. So that being said, I think that is the information that we had to share with you today. So I think we open it up at this point for discussion, questions.
Ms. Kittens? On the, what change means for the individual schools? I know that we can go online to the individual schools and see, and, you know, what's going on at this time. Is there any report, though, that shows what percentage of each school is completed? Is that on there as well?
Are you talking about for the Sales Tax Initiative?
Yeah.
There's not, there's not a percentage of completion reporting on that page. It'll show for any individual school projects that have been budgeted at an individual location, and what has been spent to date. So one might make a, make an assumption of what the percentage of completion is based on the expenditure versus the budget, which depending, you know, which may or may not be accurate. But there's no reporting on that website of percentage of completion of projects at individual locations, no. Now, we do have that conversation at our ISOC meetings in terms of kind of giving them, you know, more detailed information on some of the projects that are going on at different schools, especially as it relates to our new construction.
Anyone else? Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah, okay, so January 2018 is when the board, the current board at that time drafted a resolution and ballot language. So should we, as a board, decide that we needed to move forward with a millage increase? Are we already a month behind a viable schedule?
Well, as far as the logistics of the actual ballot language are, yes, probably, but I would, you know, probably submit to you that as far as the background work that had been laid here, communication, building of support, putting of information out there so that people understand the issues that the operating budget are dealing with, I would be saying that it would be very, very early to draft, draft language at this point, based on all of the things that took place with our other referendum before we even drafted the draft, the ballot language.
Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, so I think the ballot has, the ballot language has to be in, what, 120 days before the election?
Yes.
Anyway, the point I want to make is that how many months did we spend, and how many man-hours did we spend on figuring out which schools would get what and when, so that we were in a position, when we put our referendum on the ballot, to identify exactly how every dollar would be spent? Because we're essentially having to talk about the same thing here. We're going to ask the public to increase millage. The public is going to expect us to identify specifically what jobs, what positions, et cetera, would get what kind of money over that period of time. And I just, based on, you know, what we've heard this afternoon, I don't, you can answer the question.
Yes, I, so there were, it's hard to quantify the amount of man-hours, but months, and, you know, and in some cases, years in the making in terms of drawing up information and making sure to share that in all the places that we need to share it in order to build understanding of the issues that we were dealing with. But in terms of actually really delineating when we received the sales tax money, what our plan was in terms of what major categories we would spend that funding in, and then the schools that would be affected, of course, the schools that are going to be affected are an ongoing issue for us, because that's a, or an ongoing project for us, because that's as we work through the budget each year. And within our Capital Committee, those are the things that we continue to work on. But the initial plan for that probably was close to a year, because we had an initial plan, and then after that initial plan was made and communicated, then the events of Marjorie Stoneman Douglas happened.
That's right.
Right? And then based on those events, then the focus was shifted, and we built another plan related to what the priorities were at, you know, at that point in time. So it was probably close to, if not more than a year, really building that comprehensive plan in such a way that we felt like it addressed all of the needs and spoke to, and spoke to the public and our stakeholders.
So the point I'm trying to make is that if you took each of these academic services and compensation initiatives, put together the documentation supporting, the research supporting the arguments for the academic, and the numbers that are constantly being reset for compensation, you've got to do that for every one of these categories, and be prepared to do that before you submit your referendum, because you're going to have to include that with your referendum. Okay?
Ms. Kittens? And that's kind of what I was talking about, that if you're, you know, if you're going to present the community with an additional, you know, tax referendum, then they're going to look at the previous one and say, okay, what did we do with that one? And not just, and I don't think it's enough to say, well, it's online, you can look at your school. They're going to want to see, because there's some that are not connected to a school. So they're going to want to say, and I think we need to drill that down and have that information available, that for those that aren't connected to a school, to say, okay, we got this tax, this is what we've done to date, before we say, now, give us another one.
Yes, and we do have some summary information on the website as well. So you have, we have summary information, and then you could drill down to an individual school or schools if you desire. So we do have that information out there. But it's a year, it's a year in the making. We are one year in, so, you know, there is...
One thing that may be helpful in what you're talking about, Ms. Kittens, is, you know, we are currently in the process of the Capital Improvement Plan, putting those together. And so those will be published for each school, so, and district as a whole. So you, as a board member, can actually go into the Capital Improvement Plan and have a five-year look at, these are the projects that are really slotted for, you know, a particular school to occur, and over a five-year period of time. Now, it's, it continues to get revised, but that at least gives our public and also our school communities and staff a real good idea. They can point to a document and say, well, we're going to have our roof replaced two years from now, or we're going to get our flooring redone, those type of things.
And I get that, but devil's advocate is, a large majority of our voting populace is not going to worry if you got the roof on, you know, a certain school. They just wonder about the dollar, what are you doing with our dollars? And I, and I'm, the reason I'm mentioning it is because that group of people that can take it over or kill it will look at a broad picture. They won't look at the drilling down.
So one thing, another thing that we are doing as well, that Dr. Savage is working on with, with staff, is signage for these projects.
Right.
You know, and tax, your tax dollars at work. Like, an example would be, you know, as I mentioned to them, we had visited, Dr. Spiro and I had visited Gateway Elementary School, and when I was in the East Zone, Chris Sevan Oller was talking about the need for fencing, you know, security fencing. And, and that was way back, shoot, 2012, probably, something like that. Well, now, when you visit the school, you have that, because it's very, it was a very complex fencing project because of the way the parking lots were, and the, and the drop-off for the buses, and all of that, just complicated that whole project. But now, when you go visit that school, you have that project in place courtesy of the referendum. So there's an example, you can put a sign, it can be on the website, you know, these are your tax dollars at work. Here's an example of a successful completion of a project that was not possible until such time that we had the referendum in place.
And could you also, I mean, because I know a lot of the schools have the sandwich boards that do the attendance, and that's something that, you know, all the parents see that when they're coming into the schools, and that could be another tool as well. I mean, so there is a way of getting that out there, and of course, us, you know, doing due diligence and getting the information ourselves as well. But, so thank you. Anyone else for any questions, Ms. Vaughn?
Okay, so it seems to me, especially from what we're saying, that we're already late on getting this whole thing, a push toward millage should the board decide that's what we need to do, that we're already late in getting started on this. And if that's...
I don't know if I would agree with the characterization of late. I mean, first of all, you'd have to get direction from the board as a whole to do this type of work. This is extensive work, so it's not something that we would be just doing without that type of effort behind it.
No, and that's exactly why I'm saying we're already late, because we need all of that as background. Have we, I mean, we have this, but we really haven't, we have options from academic services, we have options from HR, but we haven't discussed, that's exactly why I'm saying, what I was saying. If it's not on 2020, am I correct in saying we would have to wait till 2022? Or can you have it on a, on your election? You can?
Yeah.
Would that cost more, because it's not a general election for the whole county?
Yeah, well, as I read, and I...
Would that be a special election?
I submit the question to Mr. Quick, but as I read the information in the statutes that we have, I believe that you would have the authority... information in the statutes that we have, I believe that you would have the authority to do it at whatever time you desire to do it, Mr. Quick.
Yeah, I mean, you can hold an election whenever you want, but what you're talking about is logistically with regards to the cost. If the county is already having...
Cost, special election when you do it.
Yeah. If the county's already having an election, then they foot the bill for the election. If you are having your own standalone election, the cost would then, they would look to the school district to bear that cost. So if there is a county election, I'd have to look at the election calendar, see if there's anything county-wide on 2021, but if there is, then you could piggyback into that. Otherwise, you know, it would be a cost analysis you'd have to make.
Well, and back with the sales tax initiative, when the district first had the idea of doing a special election, besides the cost, wasn't there something where the district was shot down by legislators or, am I remembering that wrong? I don't remember.
No, you are remembering that correctly. What happened was there was some legislation that was passed at that point that said any school district who was going to go through with the sales tax referendum on the ballot had to, number one, have an inefficiency audit completed within a certain period of time of the election, and it could only be on the general election ballot.
Okay.
So you're remembering that correctly.
This is what I'm getting at. Does that still stand?
It does, but I believe it specifically delineated sales tax.
Only on the sales, but it wouldn't apply to millage? That's the question. So one final question on this. If as a district, as a board, as a district, we decide not to move forward on getting additional millage, where's the money going to come from to give our teachers and staff? Where's the money going to come from to give them competitive salaries and not just competitive salaries, but salaries to show them that we appreciate their worth? Where's it going to come from?
Yeah, well, that's where, you know, our work together as a district comes in with the superintendent within our budget process to determine over a period of time. And it really is a long-term strategy and a long-term plan because once you commit to a certain amount for a salary or a benefit, those are ongoing costs that you have to make sure that you can maintain. So it is with our, it is with our process that we're examining everything inside of our operating budget and saying, and not just our operating budget, but all of our budgets, and saying, what is the best, most efficient way to use these? What is our goal in terms of compensation? How much will we need to do that and how can we get there?
I, I'm not trying to be difficult on here. I hear what you're saying, but do you have even a wild guess on where we're going to pull that money from?
Well...
A wild guess?
Yes, yes, yes.
Very serious here.
These are conversations, we have to...
It's like we're over a barrel on this.
We have to look at this every single year. This isn't the first time we've ever done this. If you look at what we did last, you know, our last bargaining session, we went back and looked at department budgets on every single department. We looked at staffing ratios at every single school. And we had to make adjustments to all of that so that we could put additional dollars into teacher compensation. That is, that is work that has to be done as a part of the budget process. In addition to that, we look at our legislative platform, of which you see some pieces in there that are directly related to this. We continue to push for the rollback rate, not to be, you know, not to go back to the rollback rate, et cetera. And I think at least some of the stuff was listened to, if you look at some of the stuff they've done with the categoricals, and that has helped us provide at least the additional funding that's coming forward this year, although it's still just at 2.7%. So all of those things, trying to get more efficient with transportation, which is why we have the proximity. So, I mean, I understand where your question is coming from, and addition, infusion of additional revenue is always helpful. And I think that if the district is going to go down this road, it's a good road, but I think you need to do it in a really systematic manner so that you, you know, and not acting too, with too much haste or you will go forward and fail.
And I, you know what, what I'm saying is, in case I'm not being clear, I totally agree. You can't do it with haste. That's why I wish this process had been started a lot earlier. I know I was pushing for this conversation months ago. And secondly, I know Dr. Pruitt has spoken to the fact that if, and we don't know what the legislature is going to come up with, but if they even come close to the governor's proposal and it's only for our beginning teachers, we will really be up the creek then because we can't do without our veteran teachers and it's...
I think we're on the same page with that, and we are, it's the same fight. Yeah, I think, I think so.
Well, no, because one board member said not too long ago that we should be thankful that the governor would even give that money to the first-year teachers. Be thankful. And yeah, I'm thankful, but I'm, be more thankful to see the state come up with money for all of our teachers because somehow there's a lack of understanding that if you fund beginning teachers at a salary that is now in place for teachers with eight years and you...
No, I agree.
You gave a figure not too long ago on...
Yeah, I don't have it with me, but yeah, I mean, it...
Forty million or something like that to catch up.
Yeah, well, 12 million about it would take to bring all of our teachers who are currently under 47.5 to 47.5, but then that is less than half of the population. It's 46% of our teachers about. So then what happens to the other 54% you have? And how do you fund those to kind of come up proportionally, which is a huge issue? And I think that's where you're going with that conversation.
That's where I'm going with it. And I'm remembering what Dr. Pruitt said about the shortfall we would have to even come close to bringing those up. And as an eight-year teacher who's been teaching eight years, that's not going to sit well with them.
Right.
And well, it shouldn't.
Which is one of the reasons...
To your point, I mean, there are also, if you look at the experienced teachers, they're also more heavily represented at the bargaining table. So one of the things, in order to get a contract ratified, you're going to have to have compensation for your experienced teachers in that contract. So this is one of the things that we reached out to Carol Green and have asked for flexibility, try to get with our legislators and ask for whatever package they put forward. If you give us some flexibility that allows for us to drive compensation to those experienced teachers, that is going to be very helpful because if you, if there was some legislation or at least some of the drafts that talked about 80% of the 500 million or the 650 million has to go toward a certain population, that makes that bargaining process that much more difficult.
Ms. Morgan, I know you had your hand.
Well, I was going to say something else, but it's four minutes to four and I'm going to need to leave at four. I think, I think where we are is that we need to decide as a board whether we want to direct the superintendent and staff to continue to do this kind of work on an ongoing basis so that if at some point we choose to execute, we're in a position to do so. I don't think we've done the work that needs to be done, but I think there is concern about teacher compensation, enough concern about teacher compensation going forward and our ability to compete with people who have passed millage and the extent to which the state is going to support increases in revenues, that we should give some direction. I mean, either we want the superintendent and staff to continue to explore or dig deep in the weeds or whatever you call it, you know, how you would put something like this together, or whether we have no interest whatsoever and we're not going to direct the staff to go down this road. We're simply going to direct the staff to work within the budget parameters that we have because we have no interest in exploring this initiative.
Okay. Ms. Patrica?
I just wanted to say super quickly, Ms. Vaughn, I'm sorry if you got the impression that I was thanking the governor for giving only starting teachers a pay raise. That was not my intention. That was not what I intended to communicate. What I intended to communicate was thankfulness to the governor for starting the conversation. And I think that what Dr. Atkins just said is sort of the reason why I'm thankful is because now we can have the conversation with legislators, whereas before that door wasn't even open to us. So please don't mistake it to mean that I only want starting teachers to have an increase. I certainly thank all staff, not just teachers. All staff deserve increases.
So, go ahead, Ms. Gittens.
Just the one thing I want to say about it, I mean, I agree with Ms. Morgan that we need to look at all aspects, but I think it's almost twofold. Last year, when we had to look at collective bargaining and we had to scramble to see where we could cut here and there, and that again was a conversation that should have been longer and looked at. So in other words, I'm just saying there's two sides.
And I'm sorry I'm jumping in. Again, you know, using certain words like scrambled, you know, we actually started that...
And I apologize.
Because it really wasn't at all. We spent the entire year to be, to get to that place, to be able to bargain it because we knew it had such wide-reaching impact, so...
Well, and I didn't mean, you know, to be offensive in any way, but I do recall that there was a time all the chiefs and everyone got together and had to decide, you know, what can we do? And there were cuts made at that point. But basically what I'm saying is we're looking at the possibility of a millage or the possibility of doing nothing or the possibility of looking where we might make cuts otherwise. And I think that's kind of the three buckets that we look at and decide which one we're going to take.
Before you're doing it, you can also do some things simultaneously. I think there's a short-term strategy to increase compensation, and then there's a long-term strategy to increase compensation. And I think, you know, what we've got demonstrated here, I think in this presentation, is a long-term strategy to get there is one thing that we would want to move in that direction. But then in the meantime, staff will continue to explore short-term ways to get the best with the resources that we currently have. And I don't have any issue with exploring both of those. I think the staff is more than willing to do that. I just, I do want to be realistic with time. It is, does take considerable effort, like our previous initiative did.
And I would say to you in the conversations that I've had with both unions, that, you know, the conversations and the short-term strategy are more palatable if there's a commitment by the board to a long-term strategy.
Okay, so as it stands right now, we're just... Dr. Atkins?
Well, I think as it stands right now, we can continue the work that we are doing. You know, one of the, like, the work that we have presented today, I think, you know, it's just really the first initial efforts. I asked for, when I heard this could be a possibility, I wanted staff to give really the possibilities, what's out there in terms of what do we think could do the very best for our students in terms of academic achievement within the school district as well as improve our teacher compensation package. So they started to do that work. But I will say, as, you know, as I pushed for more details, you know, there was, there was a significant request that staff be provided time to do that because it takes a lot of effort to reach out there and make a final recommendation in terms of, this is what we feel very good about asking for, something that we think our public would really buy into, and we think it would also really move the mark down the line where our goal is to be, you know, our vision to be a world-class school district, to truly be world-class in compensation and programs that we offer students. Give me what that would look like and let's get that in front of our policymakers. So that's what we're more than happy to do.
Okay, well, thank you. Does anyone have anything for good of the order? Ms. Stevenelli?
Really?
No, thank you. We... Well, now we've got two people not here. I was going to say, well, we're going to do a consensus on how...
Well, he's going to have them continue to...
Work on it.
To work on it.
Well, was that our consensus? As a board, was that our consensus?
Well, we don't have a full board here right now, so...
Right, well, we did, but... Okay, well, that's...
I can't control when people leave, so...
Well, I totally understand that, but we've been discussing around the point and I'm frankly a little bit surprised that there seems to be no real appetite for this or perhaps we can only have sales, additional taxation initiatives in non-leap year elections. Just, that's my comment. I'm done. That's my comment and I'm done.
Okay. Mine would be that, you know, this is, this is something that we've actually discussed with the district advisory committee. It came up. I think we, at that point, you know, I personally was expressing a desire to go down that road. And I had members of DAC on both sides of defense that evening, as I recall, including one of the members of financial advisory committee. But still, the conversation is one that we have been having, and I think that anything that positions our school district to be the very best that we can would be helpful and we will continue to do the work to get us there.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan? Anything for good of the order?
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Quick, you have anything to say?
No, nothing. But I mean, I do think Dr. Dusmore, I would say, was correct in my recollection of the statute with regard to that it was limited and it would, so it would not apply in this scenario. So I did want to mention that. I think she's correct, yeah.
Great, thank you. Dr. Atkins?
Nothing.
Okay, CNN, meeting is adjourned at four... Can't see it, can't see it.